So we'll continue now on Article Six. Article Six, Mr. Dunham.
Article Six, the fiscal year 2018 operating budget for towns and enterprise funds funding for OPI trust and stabilization funds. I move that the town approve amendments to the townwide organizational chart as set forth FY '18, as set forth in Appendix A of the townwide FY '18 wage and salary pay scale, as set forth in Appendix B, and that the townwide wage and salary classification plan for elected and non-union employees for FY '18 is set forth in Appendix C, and that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $37,983,493, also transfer from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, the sum of $716,855, transfer from energy grant, the sum of $10,000, transfer from the North Carver Water District receipts, the sum of $47,801, transfer from the Cranberry Village receipts, the sum of $2,516, and transfer from the cemetery receipts reserved for appropriations, the sum of $15,000, all to be allocated for the town's operating budget as set forth in Article Six, Part B of the warrant. And that the town appropriate the sum of $330,882 from estimated water receipts, North Carver Water, to pay salaries, expenses, capital, debt, and other expenditures with the North Carver Water District Enterprise Fund for FY '18, to transfer from North Carver Water District retained earnings, the sum of $56,955, to the Water Betterment Stabilization Fund, and further to appropriate the sum of $56,648 from the estimated water receipts, Cranberry Village, to pay the salaries, expenses, capital, debt, and other expenditures of the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund for FY '18, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen upon recommendation of the town's financial staff to allocate amounts within each enterprise fund, respectively, to maximize fiscal efficiency in operations, and further to transfer the difference between the net levy and the levy limit to the General Stabilization Fund, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen upon recommendation of the town's financial staff to allocate amounts within each such category to maximize fiscal efficiency in operations, provided, however, that any transfer between categories other than as may be allowed under General Law C-44, Funny Symbol 33B, during the last two months of the fiscal year shall be required by approval of town meeting.
Mr. Dunham, I'd like to correct one number that you read.
Okay, which one did I misread?
$56,684, I believe you said $648.
Yep, you're correct, that's $56,684 from the estimated water receipts, Cranberry Village, to pay the salaries, expenses, capital, debt, and other expenditures of the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund for FY '18.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So motions been made and seconded, recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommended this, 401, Selectmen humans does not agree with the organizational chart.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve, 6-0.
School Committee for the school budget?
5-0.
Okay, is there any discussion on this article? Yes, sir.
Hello, Paul Kelly, 36 Leonard Street. I just had a question through the moderator specifically about the organizational chart changes. There seem to be some positions that are now appointed rather than elected. This might be under the guise of efficiency, making them part-time, therefore going under, and I just wanted to see if I'm misreading that or not.
Mr. Noenowsky?
Yes, Mr. Kelly, there are no changes in the organizational chart compared to last year, plus what town meeting approved last year for the Consolidated Finance Department. So there are no positions that have been taken away from being elected to appointed in this operational budget.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
Mr. Moderator, through you. I wanted to know how much money has been received from constables over the past year to into our budget? Do we have that amount available?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I would say maybe if it's a couple hundred dollars, even over a couple of years. It's not a lot of money.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just to elaborate a little bit on that, it's a percentage of the fees, it's not all their fees, so it's just a percentage of the fees that we get, so...
No, I understand that, because part of that is like $75 of my money, I think, somewhere around that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Don't quote me on that, but it's close to it.
Yeah, we really don't get a lot.
All right, seeing no further movement to the microphones.
Mr. Moderator?
Sorry, Mr. Dunham.
I'd like to make a motion that this become a secret ballot for this article.
Motion to go to secret ballot is a debatable motion. It requires a majority vote, and I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, the reason I proposing this is given the contentious nature of this article. I think secret ballot is a right of every citizen. I feel I want to ensure that everybody can vote without feeling any pressure from one side or the other. So I know this is a fairly unusual happening for town meeting, but I think the seriousness of what we're going to be considering and voting on here is worth the extra effort. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Maroni.
Just to clarify, when I seconded the motion, somebody said chicken something, and I just want to, okay, I just want to let you know that my vote was public record already. So this is to protect the residents, so they don't feel any pressure either way. Trust me, I stand up for what I believe in constantly. I think you've heard me at previous meetings, and Kevin Tracy is nodding to that, that I speak, I've already spoke my mind on it, so I...
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Giswaldo, 204 Main Street. I would like to speak through you, Mr. Moderator. This week in school in social studies, I taught my students about self-government, and since before we were the United States, since the colonial times, the purest form of democracy is an open town meeting. This is our form of government in the town of Carver, and I respectfully ask that you honor that tradition in the vein of democracy and freedom. And I am proud of my vote, and this vote on this budget is no different than any other budget we've ever had. These are my friends, these are my neighbors, these are my coworkers, and these are my family members. I have nothing to hide, nor should anyone else. Thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
Believe it or not, that was one of my motions that I don't have to make anymore. Thank you very much. I too agree with a secret ballot. I think that we have an overpowering consensus of people here that may defeat this article, whether it's a secret ballot or not, but the secret ballot will protect people from any type of retaliation that may occur if you watch who votes where. I think this is the best way to go, to be honest. That's my feeling.
Mr. Ward?
I kinda am concerned, need to pick this thing up. You have had to listen to me for 10 years, and I wasn't going to really say anything tonight, and here I am. The budget, I was a teacher for 31 years. I have real strong feelings on this side of our concerns for our school budget. I was also a selectman for 10 years and had to look at many of the things that we deal with. Now, I'm your chairperson of your elementary school building committee, and I fought, I fought real hard for that, as did our building committee, school committee, selectmen, and all of you, because we're at a point where I guess we decided that we really needed it. We put the last beam, you probably saw on the paper, all the kids signed the beam, and we put that beam up the other day. All the steel work is done. In the concerns, yeah, we got a school coming. During that battle for the school, people were concerned with the taxes. I can remember when we started, and I don't remember if that was four or five years prior, they were talking $700 for the tax increase for the average home. Between the selectmen, the town administrator, the finance committee, and the different things that we did, and the reduction in interest along the way, we got that down so that the average home, when you get taxed for this school, is going to be $239. So... I remember telling folks that, and I remember we were concerned, people were concerned, well, now are you telling us the truth, or is it going to sneak up? So we promised that, and so my concern is that we follow our financial plan, and we vote through our budget without making it, it's a very difficult thing, I know it goes both ways, but that is a big concern of mine as I sit with you folks as a citizen. So, thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
Mr. Moderator, could you explain what the rules of the secret ballot will be and how it is going to be performed here to us?
We're going to take a vote first. A simple majority. Yes, ma'am. All right, well, this action is now coming on, the motion to take a secret ballot vote, it's a simple majority vote. It, basically, if you vote in favor, we're going to secret ballot. If you vote against, we'll continue on as without secret ballot. I can say that a secret ballot, we anticipate will take some time. So, and I'm not trying to sway anybody, it's just, I'm making you aware. So all those in favor of going to secret ballot signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The noes have it. Okay, motion is on the floor for Article Six.
Okay, thank you, Moderator. Tammy Johnson, 7 John Alden Court. This is just an amazing experience, as Deb Giswaldo was talking about the democratic process, I'm proud to be part of that. As Dick Ward had said too, he was actually one of my teachers in the elementary school. I have great love for him, and I know, he was awesome. But I speak now, though, to, again, plea, this isn't just the town budget, this is the school budget also. The people up here were talking, and it seems like everybody is on board, that is sitting up in the table right here, but as I'm sitting back here, I feel like my voice has not been heard. My voice has not been heard about how we should be, if we're doing cuts, have we had teachers, have we had parents, town members, part of the decision-making as far as who and what is being cut? Because this is a big problem personally that I have, and this needs, personally, and I think that I would, I am recommending a voting no down on this budget, so we can get, we could get a budget that the town can live with, that the town can live with. We are going to build this new school, yet we're not going to have the teachers to fill the classroom, and I have a problem with that. Thank you.
Mr. Carterelli?
Andrew Carterelli, 19 Pope's Point Road. I just wanted to say a few words here. Last year I was elected to the school committee. Many people used to see me over on the other side of the table there for years on the finance committee. I ran on a platform of fiscal responsibility and to help the schools have a sustainable budget, so we would stop having to have these cuts and having these fiscal crises. The budget process we went through was a very trying time. No one wanted to be going through it, no one wanted to be going through the shortfalls or the proposed cuts that we've had to decide on, and Mr. Neef and the administrative team had to select. Now, what Ms. Johnson just told you, the question she just asked, I just want to give people some background. The school committee formally invited, and I'm speaking for myself, but I'm telling you as a member, the school committee formally invited the teachers, the youth of the union, to come and speak with us two different times officially. Two different times, they did not come. We didn't even get an answer the second time. Okay, so the questions that Ms. Johnson just had, saying she wanted to be in the union, in with the information, to help the selection process or help find a solution, they had opportunities to do that, and they refused to come.
Please, I'm sorry, that's out of order. That's inappropriate and not true. I would like an opportunity to reply that way.
I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, it is very true.
It is not very true, because I, as an MTA Vice President, please, can I clarify? Because this is information that's not true. I have personally been to numerous meetings...
You do not have the floor.
Well, let me just say that.
But he's saying it's not true.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson, Tammy. Coming to meetings is not the same as sending an official response and coming and talking with us as a committee. We sent official invites and asked for representatives to please come and work with us to save positions. Excuse me. We weren't looking to cut, we were looking to save as many as possible. People have heard me say this throughout the months. Now, what I wanted to say quickly is, a no vote on this, I'm getting dry throat, sorry about that. A no vote on this question isn't just about the school, it's defunding the entire town, okay? The police, the fire, the DPW, everything. So I am asking you to support this question, to vote yes on this question, and there's still time for the school to come and work with us and try to find a solution with the school committee, with the town, to save positions. I'm sorry. I get nervous when I'm up here. Save positions, and they have until July 1st to do it. We can still make adjustments, but it is very irresponsible to vote no on a budget to leave the town with nothing, and to hope we might be able to get a special town meeting and we all agree on something. What if we don't all agree? And what if we go into the next fiscal year with no money allocated? And I'll give you a break from my dry mouth. Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, John Carter, 24 Johns Pond Road. A lot of what's been said here tonight is true. If you remember 10 years ago, we couldn't get anything accomplished in town, we couldn't rebuild our infrastructure, we had hard time meeting budgets. The financial management policies has got us to the point where we're rebuilding our infrastructure, we've got a school, we've got the new fire station. This has all been planned out, and it's got us quite far as of today. I'm just looking at the budget right now, 2018 versus 2019, it's not to go into line of detail, but we're looking at an estimated increase of $567,000 town-wide, not school, not police, not fire, town-wide. Our health insurance cost could blow that right out of the water. So we're looking at having to have all departments work with town leadership, school committee, Board of Selectmen, everyone, to look at our contracts. They're the biggest driver of the cost for the town. So I would recommend that you approve this budget, and that we ask our town leaders to work with all unions, both for the school and non-school, to try to find a way to get our expenditures under control. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tony Rota, 3 Canterbury Path. I just have to disagree with what I'm hearing from Mr. Carterelli, sorry, but you're coming on saying that the teachers just said no straight out, there's got to be a little background in that. We didn't just say no, they came to us first. Unfortunately, a little background, 2011, we did say yes to opening our contract, took a freeze, took, I lost over $3,000 that year. Since then, I probably accumulated over $15,000, that salary that I will never get back. All right, so to say that we didn't give anything up is a slap in the face. We've been here, we've been, we're willing to do something, but we want to just know what's going on. I think everybody that I'm here with, I mean, I hate pitting it against the fire department, police department, it's different. I'm not running into a burning building, all right? I can't say, you can't tell me that they're making too much money, this, that, I would, what they're doing is their job, and that's what they get paid well for, and they should get paid well for. Same thing with the police, you can't, I just hate this whole thing where we're putting them all against each other. Unfortunately, is there an answer? I don't know, I just think there's got to be something that goes, that we can figure it out, and make things work. I know, I'm sorry, I just, I keep looking at different numbers and everything else going through my head, telling we're making 12%, 14%, that's, it's a bunch of bull when you look at it, when it all comes down to it. There are certain people that might make their steps, but they've been here for a long time, they've been here for 23 years, working in the system, and I'm here for a reason. I like this place. I worry, we talk about losing kids, 400 kids gone, you know, they're gone because there's nothing for them to go to. They get up here and there's the lack of programs, things like that, you start eliminating more programs, there's going to be even less. All right, that's...
Mr. Carterelli?
I just want to respond to that real quick. Tony, Mr. Rota, I totally understand what you're saying, and I'm not, what I'm saying is not to say anything bad about the teachers, I think we have great teachers in this town, it's a testament to this town for what they've done. I mean, people still wanted to come here, we still have the failing elementary school, and people still wanted to come here, okay? It's not about the teachers, and I think anybody that bashes the teachers is wrong. But what I'm saying is, the invitations that were sent, I'm sure you've talked about it, but we didn't get, at least I didn't see an official response, and we sent two, and the second invitation we sent was at, per the request of the union president, to send him, send us, sorry, to send him an invitation for the union to come back and to not hold, to hold them not harmless, or to hold them harmless, so they wouldn't, we wouldn't be expecting them to give anything up for showing up at the table, just to come and talk, and we all agreed, yes, we sent the letter. And even that, got a no, no one came. So we don't want, we didn't want there to be any loss of positions, but no one was there, we were by our, we were on our own to solve this problem, you know? So, and I wasn't saying you should cut anything, or at least come to the table and offer suggestions. I see a lot of things about, what should the town spend this, should the town spend that? Well, these are questions that could have been asked at the table, not in the middle of town meeting, not willing to, as a result, defund the entire town. These are things that could have been worked on, and they can still be worked on, and I just, I'll say again, I think it's extremely irresponsible to vote no and defund every position, every department, every employee in the town. I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel, and I feel, obviously feel strongly about it.
All right, Mr. Monitor, I'm sorry.
I believe she was next.
Yes, and I apologize for that, but that is, I am Tammy Johnson, 7 John Alden Court. I also am the Education Association of Plymouth and Carver's Vice President for Carver, and so I have been part of the negotiations and talking to and going back and forth and asking questions, and we've had numerous meetings with Mr. Neef, and with lots of our members in talking about what is going on and our concerns about the budget. We have not gotten anything but asking to open us up our contract and actually write out now, being told the only thing that could happen is to open up our contract and basically give that bifurcational contractual 50/50 on our health insurance. And that is where we came with a stalemate, and yes, Andy Cardielli, honestly, the things that I've been going to almost every school committee meeting, and when you step up, we as educators applaud you for your efforts, even to the last, the one, you have brought up so many great points, but I have to tell you, this to the whole body up in front of me, not a lot of people had any replies to any of your solutions. And that's where the Carver teachers, we were like, well, what are all the other solutions? And no other solution came up but open up the teacher contract, and that's a fact. Thank you.
Jen Douting, 39 Williams Street. My question, I have a two-part question. The 1.2 million that's being cut this year, is that sustainable? And, but what I mean by that, I've been very passionate about keeping the teachers, because I know where music falls on education, the budget, I know where it falls. So I want to know if that is sustainable to next year, or if we're looking at another budget deficit for next year. Guesstimate would be fine, because we're guesstimating.
Mr. Neef?
Well, I mean, ultimately, I don't think we're prepared to make specific projections into next year. I mean, it all goes back to the town's financial policies, that's the issue. You know, so if we're going to build a budget based upon the town's financial policies, which is going to allocate X number of dollars, these cuts give us a better chance of being sustainable into the future based upon the town's financial policies, but that's the issue, that's what it all comes back to, that's what this body has to do, is look to, if they're not happy with the current level of funding, they need to change those policies and put money in other places. Ultimately, that's what has to happen. Now, I've been saying this throughout the year, there's, in my mind, there are five ways that this budget situation needs to be resolved. One is there can be an increase in Chapter 78 from the state. The meetings we've been having with Senator Pacico and Senator Gifford is to advocate for more state funding. That's why those meetings have been occurring, I know that meeting's been referred to several times tonight. That's really the purpose of that meeting. It's not really to dig deep into the Carver budget, it's to say that the state needs to give more. That's why we're meeting with our senators and representatives. The town can change how it allocates funds, and I think that's the discussion here, is the town going to change how it allocates its funds? There could be an increase in town revenue, which is a huge issue. This town has to find ways to increase its revenue. And I have no control over that as the school superintendent, the chief of police, and the chief of fire department have no control over increasing our town revenue. But the town has to adopt policies that we increase our revenue base. We can restructure. Part of this reduction is a restructuring, not saying that that's what we want to do, I don't want to do it, but that's a possible way to solve this problem. And the last one is an override, for the town to vote an override to increase its taxes to support the operating budgets of the school department, the DPW, the fire department, the police department, based on the school's current, based on the town's current fiscal policies. Those are the solutions, this body has to make those decisions on what you want to do with those things. In regards to, again, I'm saddened by this constant conversation about the teachers' contract. I feel like it's misplaced, I feel like it's inappropriate. The teachers have a contract, we're going to have to talk about that contract, we're going to go into negotiations next year, that's going to occur, but I feel like, I think that constant discussion about the teachers' contract and opening the contract is really a side matter. Let's say the teachers did open up their contract, let's say the teachers did take concessions and took no raises and no steps and no levels, that wouldn't solve 1.2 million dollars. We'd still have to cut. So that's, it's, that's really, that's a side point in my mind, and there's been way too much discussion from my perspective on that side point. Yes, we have to look at contracts, and Mr. Carter said we need to look at contracts. We need to look at those things, we need to have those discussions, but that's not on the town meeting floor. That happens through negotiations between the school committee and the teachers. That's where that occurs, not here. That happens between negotiations between the police department and the Board of Selectmen, I believe. Speaking out of turn, because I'm not, I don't, I'm not involved in that, I'm assuming that's where that occurs. Not on the town meeting floor, and I'm disappointed that so much discussion has been around the teachers' contract tonight. That's all I got. That's all I got.
He answered my second question, but my last comment for now is, I have the utmost respect for anyone that ever takes a zero. And I have the utmost respect for our police and our firefighters, and I will volunteer with them, and our DPW, and the teachers that teach my children. I love this town, and I think we can all work together and solve it. But we can't just vote down the school budget, because it's all bundled. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Richard Carroll, 98 Plymouth Street. I'm just calling as, I just wanted to let you people know, I moved here four years ago. I'm a parent of two special needs children. And because of somebody who lived in this community for years as a fireman who passed away, we had the opportunity to move here. We were blessed. Okay? We moved from a district in New Jersey, was much more well-funded than this one, but their services are nowhere comparable to what this school system in this town does. I was born in Massachusetts, raised in Ipswich. I wouldn't want to live in any other town but Carver. And people should be proud. I am. And the teachers, I love you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Bonacera. I'm from 19 Marxway. With all due respect to Mr. Carterelli, I kind of took exception to the fact that he implied that it was irresponsible for us as town meeting to vote down this article. I'd just like to remind everyone here that it's not our job as town meeting to rubber-stamp whatever is put in front of us. That's why we have this process right here. And regardless of whether you want to vote yes or no, or whatever you decide to do today, I hope it's not because we think we're going to be irresponsible for doing our due diligence here tonight. If we're going to just rubber-stamp everything, we might as well just move to a monarchy and get rid of our democracy altogether. So it's our job to make our decision, and should we decide that we don't like this, then it goes back, and we'll have another vote until we get what we like. That's our duty as our legislative body here tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Bellman, you have something new.
All right. So if we had the opportunity to make changes to this article, it'd be great, but we don't have any changes. Our hands are tied here, because we can't make any changes to this article at all for the money articles, because of the wording in this article. All right? So I want to know is, can town meeting, it's an if, if town meeting were to approve the budget above what was written in here? I know we can't do it this year, all right? But if we could, would that force an override for a vote? Yes, no? I don't know how that works. I'm asking that question.
We're obligated under municipal finance law to have a balanced budget, so we go back to the pay-go. If you're going to increase one line item, you have to cut another line item. So at the end of the day, we have to have a balanced budget for the town. We can't make up money, we're not like the federal government, we can't deficit spend. We have to have a balanced budget. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no. So we'd have to go through a ballot question to do an override? Is that the way it would go about first?
But that's a whole nother process. You're still obligated to have a balanced budget to go into the next fiscal year, and you can, you have a few months to correct that, but you cannot end up, before you set your tax rate, of not having a balanced budget.
Okay. My final question with this would be, is that this gets voted down, I think it would be a clear choice for the Board of Selectmen and the school and everyone else at these front tables to say, hey, listen, get your pencils ready and come back to us with something else. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. John.
I think this is the first time I have moved the microphone up. I think some of you will recognize that I'm one of the veterans of the school being approved here. I was out there pounding the pavement for at least about five years while we got that school building approved. So I want to tell you, I may not need to tell you that, that my wife is an ex-retired school teacher, I am a big school person. But what we have faced with here tonight is something that requires the wisdom of Solomon, and even he might not be able to fix this. On the one hand, we want to support our teachers. On the other hand, we can't seem to find additional money. Now, I have lived in this town for about 38 years. I love this town like that gentleman from New Jersey. I cannot find a better town to live in, in all the world. I love Carver, and I think there are enough people in here tonight with the wisdom, you just try not to lose your patience. We can handle this very calmly. There are ways around this, we just need to find them.
Ms. Maroni.
Good evening, everybody. My vote was clear at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I have to say, I wasn't going to speak tonight. This is very emotional for me as a parent. My daughter is just entering to become a teacher. She just passed her last MTEL. She has the benefit of working as an assistant substitute, correct me if I'm wrong, at the Carver Middle School. She is loving every teacher, she loves every aspect of it. And my heart is crushed as serving as your Board of Selectmen now, because quite frankly, I kind of wish I wasn't. Because I have to make that biblical choice between which do I choose? And starting in the Finance Committee back several years ago, to where we are now financially, we've come a long way, and the financial policies have helped us get there. So I started to listen in terms of what Scott was saying, in terms of where can we get extra revenue? I was very excited that, wow, let's work on the state, let's not go near the teachers' contracts, let's try to work with this Chapter 70 money. The calculations are skewed, let's see what the state has to say. After listening to them, I will tell you right now, in my opinion, they were very neutral and static in tone, that they made it clear that we are a small town, our economies of scale are against us, and that they still don't understand why we deregionalized several years ago. My point is, that's not the way this town wants to go. We've benefited from having deregionalization. My daughters went to this school when it was deregionalized, and they got a fantastic What I'm trying to say to you tonight is that we have to be realistic. I'm just praying to God that you understand where we're all coming from, and the financial policy and the 10-year trend, and that we are working really hard, and I hope you look at the huge, big picture, and that I hope that we come back to being able to bring teachers back as soon as possible. But right now, I just wanted you to hear where I was coming from before I made a vote, that this is a very difficult decision for me. So God bless, because this is a tough one. We want our town to be viable, and we have to think of the entire town, and I'm just praying that we can all be friends once this vote is cast.
Mr. Pratt.
Stephen Pratt, 16 Weston Street. When I moved to Carver in 1983, Carver was booming. We were building hundreds of homes every year, and we're adding students to the schools every year. In fact, 20 years ago, we had 200 students in the elementary grades, not 125. The reality is that with 1,600 students in the schools today, that means less than half of the homes in Carver have school students going to schools in Carver. We have over 3,300 homes, not counting the manufactured housing communities. So what that really means is that my family, my 25-year-old, my 30-year-old, that I'm living in Carver, that I'm not sending any kids to the schools right now, when I retire, when I move, my home will be occupied by schoolchildren. And that's going to be true for a lot of us if we don't stay in this town. That is going to be a reality that is coming down the road. So that's the financial policy planning that has to happen in the future, but we have to get past this year. We've had many town meetings, and we've had lots of disagreements amongst ourselves, and we've worked through it. We stand up, we vote, because as Mr. Giselle said, that's what we do in a democracy. We vote. We don't always have to agree, but we have to come to consensus. And I know this budget is very difficult. I've been involved in the town finances for the past 30 years. And believe me, every time we come here town meeting, it's always a difficult time. And the things that have saved us in the past, like the N-Star monies from six years ago, from doing, you know, just little things, we make it through. And so I implore you, as difficult as this is, let the town committees, let the boards work through this problem, work with the state. The state has its own financial problems. Its revenues are down. Either they're going to raise taxes, or they're going to have to do cuts. We don't have those luxuries. We can't turn around and find a million dollars. We've had one operational override in the entire history of Proposition 2 and 1/2 since 1980, one. And that one operational override was to open up this school in 1987 and 1988. That's the only time we've ever passed that in the town for all the voters. I ask you, please consider what is in front of you tonight. Work together, get involved in committees, get on the Finance Committee, do something, find ways of generating money. It doesn't have to be a lot. A few years ago, I went to Mr. Milniewski and I said, why don't we add the meal tax? Every other town around us is doing it. That's generating $100,000 this year. We've done solar panels, we've done so many different things, they're little things, but each of them adds up. We have a new fire station, because we came up with a plan to do that, so it could pave the way so we could get the new school. We just have to work together, and I know it's painful. I know it's painful to see those numbers up there, and to know that the students are going to lose some of their teachers. But we've done it in the past, we've worked through it, and please consider that going forward tonight. Thank you.
We have openings on the Finance Committee, if anybody's interested.
Mr. Dunham.
Just before we do, Mr. Bellman, we do have a non-resident who would like to address the body. I believe he is the Stewart President, President of the EAPC. So I know that needs the approval of town meetings, though. We've heard from the Vice President, I don't know if you want to hear from the President.
Is there a consensus that we should allow this out-of-towner to speak? Is there any objection to this person speaking? Go ahead, sir.
Tom Pinto, President of the Education Association of Plymouth and Carver. I'll be real brief. I just want to address a comment brought up earlier about the EAPC not sitting down commenting. Mr. Neef sent us a letter, I believe, early December, and I just wanted to be known that to ask for the EAPC, myself and my negotiation team did sit down with Mr. Neef, I believe, in this high school in Roman, and had a conversation on it. So I just wanted that to be clear as a clarifying point, that the Education Association did sit down at some point with Mr. Neef, and then we did take our information back to our members to make our decision. So I just wanted to make that be clear.
The only point of clarification I'd like to add to that is, those were not formal negotiations. You would agree those were not formal negotiations.
Yeah, but we did sit down and have a conversation.
Yeah, so I want people to be clear, I'm not saying that one way or the other. I've had conversations with the union throughout this whole time period. I've been meeting with union membership, we've been discussing the school's budget, they've been asking clarifying information. But at none of those times have we been formally negotiating any type of anything.
I just wanted that to be clear, that we...
But, Tom Pinto, you agree with my...
Yes, I agree with Mr. Neef. It was nothing official, but the EAPC has been involved in conversations, we have not just been sitting back and not being involved, we have been opening act of talk. So, thank you.
Mr. Dunham.
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and help Bob out here. I request to move the article.
I have one more speaker, I'm going to let Ms. Kavicki speak. Please remember that unless you're registered to vote in Carver, you shouldn't be sitting in any of this front section. Any non-voters, anyone who's not registered to vote in Carver needs to be up in the back All right. Action comes on Article 6, and I won't make Mr. Dunham read it again.
Oh, thank you. There it is.
So, "All in favor of Article 6 as presented signify by stating aye."
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The chair is in doubt. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The tellers come forward.
I think we have to count.
Tellers are coming?
Yeah. But you know what? Better to be safe than... You all right?
Okay, if you can, please, those in favor of the article, please put your cards up If this center section could raise your, no votes again. We're having some questions in terms of how the votes will tally, that the tellers can All right, if those in favor of... All right, if those in favor of Article Six as presented, raise your cards. Okay, the motion passes one twenty-six to seventy-six. Moving on to Article Seven. Mr. Dunham.
Article Seven is a capital improvements budget. I move that the town approve Article Seven as set forth in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Belvin. Oh, sorry. Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen, four zero one.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved six, six zero.
Capital Outlay Committee?
Unanimous, in favor.
Okay, Mr. Milonowski?
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to talk about now is the capital article. There's a couple of things that I want to point out with this. Earlier in the, the budget presentation, we laid out the four-step budget process where, once we have an allocation that's going to be diverted to capital assets in the town, we then meet with all department heads, they put in their request, a balanced budget is presented to the Capital Outlay Committee, which Chairman Angley will speak about in a second, as to the diligent work that they did to recommend, to recommend what's in front of you tonight. Couple points. One is, this money is in a capital and debt stabilization fund. In order to take the money out of a capital and debt stabilization fund, it requires a two-thirds vote to remove money out of a stabilization fund to put it to any use. Now, there are a couple elements of this, this piece. The first is, on the chart on the right, what you have in your packet, again, don't try to read that, it's impossible, but it's in the back of your chart, this is the ten year projection of capital projects that are proposed to go forward for each department, and that is basically a balanced capital need on a year-to-year basis. The green column is what you have in your warrant, which totals about two point nine million dollars of capital assets. Keep in mind that, of that, we are currently at six point eight five percent of our target ten percent. You've heard some discussions tonight about the need in the future to relook at our policy to see if we actually do make it all the way up to ten percent. That has been our goal. That goal has helped us with our debt financing and our bond rating. However, once we go out for our next tranche, which will include the new police station, the council and aging addition, and to pay for the roof, boilers, doors and windows of the element, the middle high school, at that point, we'll be in a position where we stopped, where we are not going to have a need for any significant borrowing after that. However, we still will need to maintain a constant level of maintenance funds to take care of the town. So there may be an opportunity to reduce that down, once we get to that point below the ten percent. Now, as part of this amount that I mentioned of the two point nine million dollars, there are three items that are tied into, the debt service we have, is that is nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, there's also a hundred thousand dollars that's built into this to reduce the debt service for the excluded elementary school, which lowers your excluded debt. And then finally, there's two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of prior leases that were made four or five years ago that we're still paying off. With that, the capital plan is also significantly benefiting our schools with new technology, the one-to-one initiative, this is going to fund computers for three new grades. It's also funding a new staging, stage lighting, which I believe this building needs, we did the carpet last year, as well as some sports equipment outside for the fields, a new bus, a new minibus, and then some new irrigation wells that have already been funded by the Capital Outlay Committee. Those are just a short sample of the projects that are in here, and again, we can go over any one of those in detail if you like, but I'm not going to read through each one of them unless someone's asking for that. Second element of this article is that, two years ago, in two thousand fifteen, town meeting authorized us to spend seven point four million dollars on upgrading the middle high school, new roof, boilers, doors, windows. With the diligent work of the superintendent, myself, as well as Dave Sigintoff, we have been able to come in with a bid that's significantly below that number. With that, we're looking to have you reduce our credit card limit, I talked about that before, is that you've authorized seven point four, we're saying, take two million of that away, we don't need it anymore. And, we want to repurpose another million dollars as part of that savings, so we've already saved over three million dollars on this project. And that repurposing is going to allow us to do the bulleted items in your warrant. It includes replacing some of the HVAC units on the building, two air handling units for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the cafeteria. It's also going to allow us to cover the doors and the windows in the two additions for this building that were not covered by the state, as well as the roof replacement for that addition as well, which was not eligible. And then finally, based upon a DEP consent decree that we have, we are, need a half a million dollars to upgrade the middle high school well and water treatment infrastructure. So again, you've authorized seven point four, we're asking you to, to take two million of that credit card away, we don't need it anymore, and we're asking you to repurpose another million dollars, still within that amount, for these other projects. So that has been something that's been going along very successfully. Finally, the last section of the article has to do with a requirement from the State Department of Transportation that is rebuilding the Rochester Bridge. As part of that, the state pays for that project with all the design and the construction costs, using federal money. However, what they do require the towns to do is to come in and secure some land interest, whether those are temporary easements or permanent easements, or some area that's needed for drainage for that project, which is the third element of this project, of the capital outlay articles. All of this is being done within the capital outlay program that was laid out several years ago, and it is allowing us to maintain our infrastructure and to further build that up. With that, if I could, I'd like to just turn it over to Chairman Angley to talk a little bit about the capital things, and then I'd like to invite Scott Neef up to talk a little bit about the status of our middle high school and the elementary school project, just a very brief overview on that.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Michael. Just, just a few words. Mr. Belvin said, I don't know, some time ago when he wanted to move this up, that there seemed to be some, I forget your words, Bob, but paraphrasing, that you thought perhaps there was some openings in here where there could be some savings by changing and putting stuff around. Let me be clear, anybody can make mistakes, and our committee is certainly not error-proof. But, this is my thirty-third year as chairing this committee. And every year, we meet with every department that submits a budget request. We kick tires, we go in trucks, we go, been on the roof of the, the various schools and the town hall, looking for this and that. Let me say that, we don't run the departments, but when the department head says that he needs something, we listen and we pay close attention. We have, one of our members is a retired fellow from the DPW, very knowledgeable on the way things work there. I'm a cranberry grower, I bulldozers trucks, front-end loaders, not that I'm an expert, but I'm certainly a little well-versed in how these things work. And given those advantages, we really take a look at what's going on, because we pay taxes too. And I think the most important thing that, that we, I guess it, it comes down to snowstorms. If you don't have the DPW trucks with the stainless steel beds that are not all rotted out, you know, you've got to go out and put sand, salt, plow the roads, that's one of the first things we hear about, is how the road isn't plowed, or this, you know, why didn't they do my development? So these are the kind of things that we, we work for, that's just a thumbnail sketch of what the Cap Outlet Committee does. And it's, that was pretty much all I had to say, just so you understand that we, we just don't take the word of whatever, if somebody wants a dream list, we, we actually kick the tires, so. And, we have the greatest department heads, believe me, it's, it's been great working with them, very responsible, if they say they need it, boy, they really do. So, anyway, that was pretty much what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Angley. Mr. Neef?
So I think people are fairly well acquainted to what's happening with the building projects, I know it's a little late, but, so I'll go through this briefly. First, in terms of the new elementary school, really, the, the key information is, the project is moving along ahead of schedule and under budget, which is really, those are the two key messages. As an example of ahead of schedule, we had the topping-off ceremony that Mr. Ward referenced earlier, and that was held on Thursday, March thirtieth. When you looked at the original schedule for the building, that was supposed to happen the first week in May, and it happened the last week in March, pretty, you know, so estimate, put in the maybe up to four weeks ahead of schedule in terms of the building project itself. And it's just great to see that building going up over there. You know, in terms of that project itself, I'd just like to thank a few people. First, the School Building Committee, which, which Mr. Ward is the chairman, Ruby Maestis, James O'Brien, Andrew Solivoda, John Carter, Dan Ryan, Sarah Sterns, Heather Sepovoda, John Della Proscoli and myself are the members of the School Building Committee. And also, our, our architects, HMFH, led by Matt LaRue, Diana Jeffrey, Wendell Chin, and our project managers, PMA, led by Chris Carroll, Chad Critten and Walter Hotley. Both the architects and the project managers are doing an outstanding job for this community in overseeing this project and making sure that, the, ensuring the quality of the construction. So the construction's happening at a timely basis, but the quality is also there. So we've just been really impressed with how that project is moving along, it's been really positive at this time. People may be less acquainted with the accelerated repair project of the middle high school. Mr. Milonowski referenced that, that in this building, we're going to be upgrading, we're going to be replacing all doors, well, if the article's approved tonight, replacing all doors, all windows, the, the entire roof of this building. And, and that, that's going to be some serious needed upgrades for this facility. So, we actually had, our kickoff meeting for that project was on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth. The general contractor is J.J. Cordosi, the project manager is Leftfield Associates, and the architect is Johnson Roberts. And, as I said, I think that's going to just be a huge upgrade in terms of the sustainability of this building, with the goal of maintaining this building's lifespan while the community supports the building of the new elementary school. That project is set to begin as early as May fifteenth in the boiler room, and possibly working on the roofs as early as May twenty-ninth. So we will be having some construction happening during school. The scope of the project, in essence, didn't allow for it to be completed fully over the summer, so as a school department, we had to make a little bit of a choice of, when would we rather disrupt the school? Is it better to disrupt it in June, or is it better to disrupt it in September? We made a decision that it's probably better to disrupt in June versus when we return to school next year. So the goal is that the, the project would be substantially completed upon our return next year, with, as I say, construction beginning as early as May fifteenth within this facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neef. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Don Williams, six dash eight, South Middle Village in Carver. I am also the Old Colony School Committee representative, and Old Colony was built nineteen seventy-five. Now, you said you did a survey of all the town buildings, well, you have equity of twenty percent in the Old Colony building. You also have a twenty percent responsibility for the maintenance. Now, I can't really read the list here, but is Old Colony listed here?
No, it's not.
Do you have any planning on Old Colony capital improvements? How do we, we have to bring forth our own article to, and is it, I mean, you're going to end up with, you know, we're trying to figure out, how do we get into the queue here? How does, you know-
Sir, to my knowledge, we haven't received anything from Old Colony about a, a capital request.
Right, because your town meeting is so early, we deal with five towns, and to get the information to you before we even, practically before we start our budget, you want the information in December, we're dealing with five towns. They don't, we can't start a budget with four other towns that are having meetings in June. I mean, it makes it difficult on our end to come thirty days before this meeting, when Rochester and the June, June thirtieth meeting.
Any capital requests that come to the town through all the departments need to be submitted in October.
All right, so I will bring that back to Old Colony if we need to start that soon. We'll start that soon. Because as I said, you own twenty percent of it. Thank you.
Mr. Belvin.
All right, so, you said this, you guys look at everything, and I, I do, I, I know you guys do, every year, and I have to say, most of the time, I agree with what you guys say on the finance committee. I listen to you guys more than I listen to everyone else, to be totally honest, all right, because you guys are really looking at the numbers.
What, what about us, Bob?
What about you?
Oh, well, I'm different from them, they're finance, I'm just, you know, cap out.
Okay, but even still, okay, so, what I have to say here is, I have a motion, actually I have three of them, but the first one here is that, I'll just make the motion first, all right. I move to delete the words and amounts in the following Article Seven, the three-quarter ton pickup with the plow, the council on aging feasibility study, the rehab brush breaker, the four-by-four command vehicle, two cruisers, a school minibus equipped, annual reduction of the debt exclusion for the new elementary school solar, all right? I'm asking that, I have it in right in here?
So it's not clear, Mr. Belvin, are you looking to, to basically delete the, the funding for these?
Correct, that's my, that's my intention.
Mr. Belvin made a motion to delete the words and amounts from Article Seven, which include the three-quarter ton pickup-
Yeah.
-with plow, the council, council on aging feasibility study, the rehabilitation of the brush breaker- with plow, the council on aging feasibility study, the rehabilitation of the brush breaker, a 4x4 command type 4 response vehicle, two cruiser replacements, oh, school minibus and equipment, annual reduction in debt exclusion for the new elementary school, solar.
Yeah, I think so.
So just to repeat for everybody.
3/4 ton pickup.
Yep.
The COA, council on aging feasibility study with addition to library, rehabilitation of the brush breaker, 26, that was the one I was missing.
4x4 command?
4x4 command type 4 response vehicle and equipment, two cruiser replacements and equipment, school minibus and equipment, and the annual debt reduction, reduction in debt exclusion for the new elementary school, solar. So that's the motion. Do I hear a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, that's fine. So, did it?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
Okay, so these would, these would total up $578,000, it would free up that amount of money to be used for other purposes for this town. I asked for this to be done beforehand, before the other vote, because then there would be some other monies available that we could vote on to go to another budget item, all right? In particular, I'm going to hit the fire department, I don't usually do this, but the rehab of the brush breaker, we just did one, and it looks great. We have three of them, most towns only have one or two. I think we can wait on that, that's $175,000 right there. All right, then the command vehicle, the same way, all right, we can wait on that. The 3/4 ton pickup, another year, we can wait on that one. The council of aging feasibility study, I'll talk about this for a little second here, okay? At the selectmen's meeting, the chairman had stated that it was 10 years out, even if we try to do anything with the council of aging. So $25,000 for a feasibility study now, things could change in 10 years, we could have a huge influx of money coming in in the North Carver urban renewal thing, who knows? All right, but I think spending that money now, we could save that, we don't need it The minibus too, driving by there, there's a bunch of minibuses there, and I know there's probably one that may need to be replaced, but maybe we need to save some money, put this money somewhere else, all right? Personally, I'd rather see it go to the schools, keep some teachers. $578,000 would save some teachers' positions, okay? And then the solar reduction, they have $100,000, that would have saved it. So this money goes back into the, in there that's available that we could use, maybe for something else if we come back to another town meeting, all right? That's my goal, all right? Like I said, $25,000 even for the council of aging feasibility study, it's too early for that, we're nowhere near it. Thank you.
Mr. Milonowski?
Mr. Belvin, just a couple of questions and some clarification. Many of these vehicles you're speaking out have exceeded their useful life, and that's why they've gone through this process as a priority to be, to be put online through the fire department and through the police department. A couple other clarifications, the COA feasibility study with addition to the library, that is not a 10-year plan, that should go forward around the same time that the police station goes forward. I don't know where the 10 years is coming from, but that is, that is something that's imminent. Finally, the issue of the annual reduction in the debt exclusion for the new elementary school for the solar, that $100,000, that is an obligation the town already has, because we have a $1.1 million debt service on the excluded bond for the elementary school. This $100,000 reduces that down by $100,000, so that that's less than taxpayers have to pay. If this is not approved, it still has to be raised on the tax recap sheet, which will then cut into other budgets. So there's no savings that's tied into here. The other thing that I want to bring your attention to is, this money, by not approving it, doesn't go back to the general fund. It does not go back to the operating budget. This goes back to one-time money within the capital and debt stabilization fund. When I started my presentation, it takes a 2/3 majority money to move funds out of the capital and debt stabilization fund. It's not allocated for salaries as you have portrayed those to be.
And the council of aging, I got that from the selectmen's meeting, Ron Clark stated, it's 10 years, they're not looking at it for 10 years. That's what was stated at the selectmen's meeting.
I don't know what year he told you that, but we're working under the same premise with the police station.
All right. I'll go to the chief, I think he might actually answer my question.
Chief DeFlee.
Thank you. Work?
No.
Nope.
Got it.
Not good at karaoke, so. So, if you'll indulge me for a minute before I answer what I want to speak about, but I've worked for the community for 15 years now, and I feel like I'm a part of the community, I don't live here, but I've, over the past four years, been charged with the responsibility of spending the money appropriate to run a police department. And I hope that you're happy with the services we're giving you, because we're trying to do that as efficiently as we can with the money we have. So, speaking tonight about the suggestion that we cut back the two police cruisers, we have a police cruiser program that we've had for several years, that has saved us a considerable amount of money in maintenance and repairs by having a cruiser assigned to each person. To similar communities around us, Hanson and Plimpton and other communities, we spend much less per cruiser to maintain them over these years than other places do. And that's because they're assigned to one officer, and that allows us to get a lot more years of service out of them. Original plan was seven years and 155,000 miles, and the two cruisers that are on to be replaced this year are both 2005 cruisers. That's 12 years, that's quite old cruisers, they've been on the road for quite some time, and they're up. I would suggest that we don't consider cutting those at this point, we don't ask for anything we don't need, we've never come to you and asked for more than we need, we've worked within our budgets over the past four years to maintain that, and we continue to do so. So everything, anything that we have on the list that we're asking for is definitely stuff that we need, it's not stuff that's a luxury. Adding, adding those two new cruisers will help to maintain the lower cost of maintaining that fleet, and will give us, moving forward, will continue the program. The big benefit of that program is, over the past 12 years, we've gone several years, four, maybe five years, that we've come to you and asked for cruisers, and we haven't had the money, we've been able to bypass it and not buy new cruisers. So I don't want to fall behind again, because as we do that, it just increases the number of cruisers we have to ask for every year. So I would hope that we would vote to consider not, not taking those out of what we need today, because we actually do need them, they're quite old and we need to replace them. So, that's all I have to say for now, I don't know if that answers your question.
Please to be my guest.
Mr. Pratt?
Steven Pratt, 16 Weston. It was six years ago tonight, April 11th, 2011, that this body voted for the capital building stabilization fund. From that, we have a new fire station that is being built. Several years ago, this body then decided, and I believe it was the right decision going forward, to have it become a capital stabilization fund before building and equipment, and it allowed the town really to revisit how it maintained its infrastructure. And I think, you know, from a capital outlay perspective, it gave them a lot more guidance in terms of financials.
We knew where the money was coming from.
You knew where the money was coming from, right. And I think that's the big change that we've made, we've decided to invest in our infrastructure, you know, just like you would at your home, in maintaining your home, in purchasing cars and things like that. So I think, I think the plan that we have, it's very aggressive, I mean, to get 10% of your budget, your revenue, set aside for your infrastructure, I challenge anybody at their homes that does that. And it's, it's something we need to do as a town, and we need to maintain it, and we should follow the guidance, because it'll allow us to get the fire station that's going to be opened up to everyone on Saturday to take a look at. It will allow us to get the new police station without a debt exclusion. And I think those are the things you have to look at, and it's a different approach than many other communities take, and it's a different approach than we had in prior years, but it's a valuable tool. And I think to start cherry picking out things that, you know, we don't want to do and want to save, because it is for our infrastructure. And as Milonowski said, this is not going to go roll back in the operating budget, it's going to stay in the capital and stabilization fund. Thank you.
Sir? Cornelia Shea, 148 Plymouth Street, Carver. I can't speak to the vehicles, I've seen some of the police vehicles, and I certainly believe they need replacing and updating, for sure. But I will speak about the COA feasibility study with the addition to the library, because it says a lot about who we are as a town and where we're going. I don't believe that putting our seniors who are in severely difficult issues down at the COA, it's dangerous, it's not designed for seniors, and there's no room, sticking them in a box in the back of the library is despicable. Despicable, disgusting. That being said, the new police station, and although Bob was mistaking his reference, it was brought up recently on Area 58 by Ron Clark, as five years from now, with the possibility of a community center 10 years down the line, they should be planned together. This master plan goes on for six pages, saying about the needs of a community slash senior center in the middle of Carver. I believe that building the police station in a spot other than where it is will allow us to build it and then occupy it without serious loss of services to the town, much like the fire department was done, it was a great idea, it was a great job. They worked very hard on this idea, and I think a much better place for a senior center, community center, is within walking distance of the library, the town hall, and the park. I would certainly advocate strongly against spending the $215,000 for something that does not look to our future, to where we're going with this town and where we want to go. This is a short-sighted, stop-gap measure to make some sort of impact on the seniors. Ask a senior, is there any here, is there any here that agree that they should be put in a box in the back of the library and shoved to the back of our town? Thank you for your time.
Hi, Jen Bogart, 116. Jen Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. I have crazy social anxiety, so I'm sure my husband watching at home is telling me to sit down. I was part of the master plan, and there were many discussions through you to Mr. Shea. There were many discussions about the senior center, and I was the one to originally propose that it be a combo senior and community center. And in the discussions of that, which was well-received to make it something for the whole community, were the discussions about the location. And it was actually a representative from the Council on Aging Now who was the one to suggest the library as a location for it. And there were questions about if that would make sense, and if there was enough room for it, and where would the parking go? But it was actually at the request of some people from the Council on Aging that we look into that. So before you dismiss where it should go, you might want to talk to them about what they want.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Dunham?
If I may answer, I spoke to just as many, I spoke to people down at the COA too. They come up to me and they ask me, well, who's going to do something? I can't do anything, all I can do is stand up here and fight for them. Fight for them, because they, all they want is a room, room where they can exercise and meet.
I'm not ready for back and forth here, so, thank you.
Yes, so, let's look to the master plan then, when it comes to this, and what their recommendations are. I know nobody here has probably had a chance to read it, it only came out a couple of days, and it was hard to get my hands on.
Thank you. Mr. Neef?
No, I'm just playing with lights.
Oh. Chief Weston?
I guess so.
Chief? Use this one?
While they're working, can I briefly?
Sure, Mr. Dunham.
Okay, just a couple of things. You know, I can understand Connie's kind of being upset about that, but it's also a feasibility study. The study could come back and say, the library's not a good place to put this. And I just want to make sure that, you know, you hadn't misread the number, I thought you said 250, and it's 25,000?
I said 25,000. The street development plans for the police station at 190,000.
Oh, okay.
It should be considered together for long-term interest.
I don't, I don't need this back and forth, please. Mr. Chief Weston?
Last thing I want to do tonight is stand up before you, I know everyone's tired and wants to go home, but when someone questions an article from a fire department, I certainly deserve to represent that. So I'll be very brief as I can. Your fire department certainly supports every department in this town, and we always will, no matter how you vote at this meeting. I stand before 75 call professionals every day that give all they can for this community. So first of all, I want to thank them. Our current rehab of a brush breaker is our brush breaker 26. It was purchased new in 1991, and it's housed at our Station 1. Our brush breaker 26 is one of three identical brush breakers, one bought in 1991, '98, and '99. We currently do maintain a four brush breaker fleet, and that's protecting 40 square miles of the town of Carver, which is heavily wooded and has the third-most combustible forest in the United States. Our brush breaker 26 is 26 years old, and if the rehab is approved, will be 27 years old by the time it's done. The National Fire Protection Agency recommends that a vehicle be rehabbed, if it's not rehabbed after 25 years, it be taken out of service. I feel a rehab could extend this vehicle another 10 to 15 years. This vehicle's in relatively good shape, and a new vehicle costs approximately $420,000. And there's no way I could look at any taxpayer and say that we need to dispose of this vehicle. So the logical alternative was to try to rehab it, which is what we're doing. By rehabbing it at $175,000, we're going to save approximately $245,000 on this project. Under this capital plan, it does call to rehab the two additional ones in the future, not right away, but when they're due. The planned rehab of brush breaker 26 has been well-documented in our capital plan for the last five years. I'm certainly willing to go through the other articles that were questioned, but in the essence of town meeting, I'm going to step aside. So, again, thank you for all your support you give out to the department.
Mr. Belvin?
My next part is on the, under your motion number two, all right? My question is...
Excuse me, we haven't voted on this.
I know you haven't voted on it, but I mean, it's, it's part of your warrant here.
No, no, we only want, work on one amendment at a time.
Okay, so we're going to only go on motion one?
We only go on one amendment at a time.
This, excuse me, please, I want to make it clear, if we go ahead and vote, we're
going to vote for all three of these items on here, right?
Right now, your motion is, is to specifically exclude seven items. That's the only thing that your motion entails.
Okay, sorry, I was moving ahead, sorry.
So, okay, we come to the motion by Mr. Belvin to exclude seven items, if you want me to reread them, I'll reread them to you.
No.
And I want, it should be noted that the monies will be coming out of the capital and debt stabilization fund if this is passed. and Debt Stabilization Fund if, if this is passed. All those in favor of, of Mr. Belvin's motion to remove these seven items from the capital improvements budget, signified by stating aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so voted.
The noes.
Ah, excuse me, the noes have it, so voted, sorry. I've been up here a while.
I gotta be at work at 5:00, so, alright? My next one is under your motion number two. It authorizes the town administrator. Did the Board of Selectmen have anything to do with that? Of the monies going, of approving it? From the, it says the town administrator and capital outlay chairman? It doesn't say anything about the selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen have to approve all bond authorizations.
Okay. And my final one is, I don't think we should vote at all on the last one item here about the bridge, because those maps weren't at the Selectmen, at the clerk's office, they didn't get filed until yesterday afternoon, when they were supposed to be filed a long time ago. And, I mean, I think personally, we pay enough in that office, and like I said, I tried to get there, it didn't have it, I got, I did get an email saying that they were available, but I was already long gone. So, if we don't have the information, they said it's, it's filed in the clerk's office, and it's not, then I don't think we should vote on it.
Mr. Miloski.
We move to the Article 7 as a whole. The proposed motion was to approve Article 7 as set forth in the warrant. This requires a 2/3 vote, therefore it will be hand count. And I guess I didn't tell you that the Board of Selectmen vote was?
4-0-1.
Finance Committee vote?
6-0 approved.
Capital Outlay Committee?
3-0.
Maybe I did take that. Alright, tell us, come forward, please. Okay, all those in favor of Article 7, raise your cards. And I should note that the reason why we're having to do a hand count is because we didn't pass the town meeting procedures at the beginning of the town meeting, and as a result, every 2/3 vote has to have a hand count. Motion passes 140 to 1. I'm not gonna recognize that.